All right, I'd like to call the order. April 1st, 2024, regular town council meeting. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all will stand. And will the superintendent lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to change the order up a little bit of today's meeting. So Keith, would you make the motion, please?
I make a motion. I make a motion to amend the agenda and start with the public hearings, item D, the public hearing on the purchase of town property by WD-2 LLC located at 9300 to 9307 Glen Hollow Drive with a purchase price of $600,000, sorry.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Warren, read the legal notice.
Yep.
Legal notice, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on Monday, April 1st, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers to consider the purchase of property owned by WD-2 LLC located at 9300 to 9307 Glen Hollow Drive for a total price of $600,000 dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 14th day of March, 2024. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
And everyone knows Shannon, our town planner, and she'll be doing the presentation tonight.
Hi, good evening, everyone. As Kathy noted, I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner for Farmington. And we're going to discuss 9300 to 9307 Glen Hollow Drive, the proposed acquisition from WD-2 LLC. On the screen is the proposed area for acquisition. It's 9300 to 9307 Glen Hollow. It was an extension of Glen Hollow Drive as part of the Bridgehampton Crossing subdivision. It's approximately six and a half acres and it envisioned the extension of Glen Hollow Drive to a new cul-de-sac with four lots to the east and four lots to the west. It is, they are residential vacant lots. It's the R40 zone. These lots do connect to existing open space and provide important preservation of upland habitat, both to the Unionville Brook and an unnamed tributary to the Brook. The town's appraisal came in at $610,000 and the owner's appraisal was $840,000 for this land. This next slide, just as a zoomed out version to try to give you a sense of place with respect to Farmington. On the left side of the screen or west is Burlington. So this is very close to the Burlington Town Line. The outline in red is those same eight lots and the six and a half acres that's proposed for the acquisition. To the north northeast, the area outlined in the blue or cyan color is 52.5 acres of town-owned open space. That open space land came to us as part of the Bridgehampton subdivision. It's a cluster subdivision, so that was dated to the town as part of that subdivision. And then to the southeast, there's a smaller, more linear piece of open space, and that's just over eight acres of land. And I believe those were acquired, that area was acquired as part of the Glen Hollow Drive and the Oldfield Road subdivisions. So that's been held by the town for a longer time period, I believe. So the purpose of this acquisition is really, there's threefold with respect to the purpose. It does provide a nice linkage to the existing open space area. The existing open space, as noted in that prior screen in the blue area, is 60 acres. So this would give us 66, well over 66 acres of open space. There's important buffers to the wetlands and water courses, the upland to the Brook, the Unionville Brook, as well as the tributary to the Brook, and preservation of wildlife habitat. So the wetland study for the Bridgehampton Crossing noted upwards of 50 species of a variety of birds, reptiles, mammals, and fish that utilize this area. So this is important habitat to preserve and provide additional buffering to those brooks. You want to go to the next page?
Sorry.
Sorry, no, that's okay. So again, as part of this, what we're recommending is the purchase of the property owned by WD-2 LLC located at 9300 to 9307 Glen Hollow Drive. It is six and a half acres and it's the, for the price of $600,000. This is less than either of the appraisals. Acquisition process. We've completed step one. We are in the middle of step two. Step three would be this evening for the referral to the 8-24 referral to Town Plan and Zoning Commission. And then step four would be the Town Plan and Zoning Commission to receive that 824 referral and discuss it at their April meetings and report, issue a report back to Town Council so the council may act on it at their May 14th meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, Shannon.
Absolutely.
If there's any comments or questions from the public, you have an opportunity now to discuss this piece of the purchase of the property. You can come up, you have five minutes. State your name. Anybody? Catherine, anybody online?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right. And then we can close this public hearing. We'll go one to the second.
Item D2, a public hearing on the town council's proposed budget for fiscal year 2024-2025.
The legal notice, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on Monday, April 1st, 2024 at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the town council's proposed budget, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 14th day of March, 2024. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Joe Capitifer, your Town Council Chair, and thank you very much for coming to our public hearing on the council's 2024-2025 budget. The decisions the town council made returning to the budget were based on several factors. The town's strategic plan, the seven-year capital plan, long-term financial forecasts, the current economic climate, striving to keep town services and educational programs at a high level. This proposed budget was unanimously approved by the town council after much hard work and deliberation last month. Prior to this presentation, the budget has gone through several reviews and adjustments, beginning in January, when department requests came from the town manager, continuing in March with the Town Council Budget Workshop Sessions and tonight's public hearing on the town council's proposed budget. The town council always strives to keep taxes as low as possible while maintaining excellent services. The budget drivers in this budget include increased cost of living and inflation, increased personnel and contractual costs, the debt impact for the Farmington High School, rebuilding of the Board of Education accounts to keep educational programs at a high level, and five, increased in capital spending, reducing our capital budget year after year is not the best practice and will cost us more in the long term. Slide five shows the Farmington's current mill rate as compared to the other Farmington Valley towns. Farmington currently boasts the lowest mill rate at 24.21. With the mill rate increase in at 25.45, we are still far below other Farmington Valley towns. Similarly, this slide shows that Farmington will maintain the lowest mill rate of the 29 towns in the Hartford region, regardless of how their mill rate changes in the other towns during their budget process. Having a low mill rate is crucial for attracting businesses and homeowners and maintaining property values. The increase in mill rate is necessary to continue to provide for the excellent town services that our community has come to rely on. Our continued investment in education, public safety, infrastructure, and recreational facilities is aimed at enhancing the well-being of our residents and business community. In the town council's proposed budget, I'm sorry, if the town council's proposed budget is approved tonight, the next steps are, the proposed budget becomes the town council's recommended budget, which will be sent to the annual town meeting. The annual town meeting would be held on April 15th, 2024 at 7:00 PM at the Farmington High School Auditorium. This meeting will also be live on Zoom, but only those in attending will be able to, in person, will be able to make public comment. The annual town meeting will then be adjourned to the referendum vote, which will be on April 25th, 2024. Farmington is a great town in which we live, work, play, and prosper. We remain well-positioned in terms of economic development, exceptional education, and providing high-level services. On the behalf of the town council, I want to thank the town manager and her staff for all their hard work in this budget. I also want to thank the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools. The town council felt very strongly in this budget would maintain the excellent town services and school system that Farmington residents expect. In a year where we're dealing with the high cost of living, including the overall cost of goods and services, the impact of the debt of the new Farmington High School, and increased contractual obligations, this is a fiscally responsible budget. I ask the community to come out and vote yes to support this budget on April 25th, 2024. I will now turn the presentation over to Kathy Blonsky, our town manager, and our Board of Education, who will present the details of their budget.
Hi, good evening, Kathy Blonsky, Town Manager. I present for your review the town council's proposed budget for the fiscal year 2425. The proposed budget has already gone through several changes. For the municipal budget, it began at the departmental level with requests coming to me in January. To meet the budget target of no more than 2.8% increase above the current expenditure set forth by the town council, I decreased $1,452,110 from the budget that was requested by my departments. This decrease reduced the overall budget increase from 7.03% to 2.8%. During the budget deliberations last month, the town council reduced the Board of Education budget by an additional $924,755. They added $30,000 to the town portion of the budget and decreased the capital budget by $597,000. The town council also increased the fund balance contribution by $350,000 for a total appropriation of $1,200,000. It should be noted that the town council understands that the reliance on the fund balance as a revenue source on a yearly basis is not considered best practice. That said, it is likely that the use of the $1.2 million in last year's budget will not be needed because of unexpected revenues. Last year's overall budget had a 0% increase in expenditures and a significantly reduced capital budget. This was necessary in order to help mitigate the impact of the state-mandated revaluation. This year's budget has its own challenges. This was expected based on the town's long-term financial forecast, which predicted increased debt services due to the new high school project. Overarching budget drivers this year include limited grand list growth, inflation, increased personnel and contractual costs, debt impact, and rebuilding of educational programs. This budget strives to maintain current service levels and increase its capital funding, which includes four separate bond authorizations. The budget does include the use of fund balance, but even with the proposed $1.2 million appropriation, the current fund balance meets our fund balance policy. I will now review the town council's proposed budget. The general fund budget includes the proposed spending for the town, for the school system, for debt service, and for capital improvements. The proposed budget for Westwood's Golf Course, the Recreation Fund, and solid waste collection and disposal are also included for your review. The budget is broken down into three categories: expenditures, grand list, and revenues, which is used to develop a tax rate. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2425 is $128,601,165, an increase of $7,334,932, or 6.05% above the current budget. Town operations. The proposed town budget is $35,021,657, an increase of $982,389, or 2.89% above current expenditures. This includes general administration with an increase of 4.05%. Public safety, an increase of 3.25%. Public works, a decrease of 1.19%. Community and recreation, a decrease of 1.05%. And the other account, an increase of 4.06%. Some areas to note. Contractual obligations and overall personal costs town-wide have increased due to the current job market in an effort to attract and retain employees. A portion of the seasonal summer help funding was restored in the Highway Department. These seasonal employees enable Highway Division to complete more ground maintenance tasks during the busy summer months. A portion of the seasonal help funding was restored in the Police Department. These are seasonal employees hired during the summer months to patrol the various walking trails and parks throughout town. This budget funds only one seasonal employee at Westwood's Golf Course. Last year, we eliminated one position and we were unable to bring it back in this budget. This budget includes a half-a-year funding for a Recreation Director in accordance with the town's strategic plan. We have also shifted funds from the Community and Recreation Operating Budget to the Recreation Fund to offset some of this cost. The budget funds only two new 24-hour police vehicles. The Police Department Vehicle Maintenance Plan proposes replacing three 24-hour vehicles each year. The register voter account has increased due to the early voting mandates. The increase includes staffing, supplies, and equipment for early voting events. The state of Connecticut has contributed $10,500 to offset a small portion of these costs. Townwide contractual service account for computer support and software has increased significantly. The contribution to the Farmington Library is $2,975,000, which is a 2.8% increase above current budget levels. Utility accounts are stable throughout the budget. This budget is now separated by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increase for salaries is 3.02%. The increase in benefits is 4.07%. There is a decrease of 1.94% for materials and supplies. There is an increase of 7.89% for equipment. The increase for contractual is 2.99%. Lastly, there is a decrease of 2.07% for utilities. Debt. The debt group accounts includes appropriations to make principal and interest payments on the town's long-term debt obligations. The total amount proposed for next year's fiscal year is $11,426,268. This is an increase of $1,461,525, or 14.67%. These funds, the funds in these accounts pay for lease financing obligations, clean water fund loans, and the principal and interest due on the town's existing bonded debt. Funds are also included in this account for the interest payments on a $28 million debt issuance planned for August of 2024. All the debt proceeds will be used to pay the expenses associated with the building of the new Farmington High School. Refuge collection. The refuge collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid, bulky, and hazardous waste generated by town residents and the town's landfill obligations, operations. The budget proposes no rate increase. The annual fee will be $268 per household. Capital improvements. The town's capital improvement policy and the town's strategic plan were the policy guidelines that were at the forefront when formulating the CIP. The proposed general fund appropriation to support the first year of the capital improvement plan is $2,283,000. This is less than our capital funding policy, but is significantly more than last year's capital appropriation. There are also four bond questions. In accordance with our financial forecast, bonding large projects and equipment on a consistent basis and adhering to our capital improvement policy enables us to fund our capital needs. The summary of the capital projects are listed on the screen. $1,100,000 for Board of Education General Fund, $1,183 for Town General Fund Projects. These capital projects shown on the screen are being funded by other funding sources and not through the general fund or taxpayer dollars. These funding sources include donations, state dollars, and user fees totaling $1,115,000. Summary of bonding. Board of Education. $2,385,000 is the Westwood's roof replacement. The roof replacement project was identified in the K-8 facility study. The Westwood's roof is original to the building and 22 years old. This project is also subject to partial state reimbursement. Fire Department. $1,400,000. Engine eight replacement at East Farms Fire Station. The purchase of a new engine eight, 25 years old, for East Farms Fire Station would allow the town to retire engine 10, which has become costly to maintain due to the ongoing repairs and maintenance. The current engine eight would remain a spare housed at Oakland Gardens. $1,750,000, a Quint fire truck at Tunxus Hoes. A Quint fire truck is an apparatus that combines the equipment capabilities of a ladder truck and a water pumping ability of a fire engine. The new Quint would replace engine five and rescue 15, both of which are 20 years old, at Tunxus Hoes Fire Station, which would, this would enable us to downside the fleet and in turn reduce future maintenance costs. It should be noted that it takes approximately two years from when an order is placed to build a new fire truck. Police Department. $2,750,000 HVAC and roof replacement. In 2023, the Town of Farmington commissioned a HVAC Systems Condition Analysis Report for four town-owned buildings: Farmington Town Hall, Farmington Police Department, Farmington Community Senior Center, and the Farmington Highway Garage. The report has determined that all four facilities are in need of significant renovations to bring existing systems, equipment, and control systems up to current construction and energy standards. The Police Department was determined to be the most critical as the systems frequently fail, require unscheduled maintenance calls, and are at the end of their useful service life. As an example, the air conditioning units were inoperable for an estimated six weeks this past summer. The budget proposes to couple the air conditioning replacement project with the roof replacement at the Police Department. The Police Department roof is 22 years old, original to the building, and leaks, and has leaks that frequently require repair. The air conditioning units are rooftop units, and it will be more efficient and economical if the roof is replaced at the same time as the air conditioning replacement. The total bonding authorization proposed is $8,285,000. Expenditure summary. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2425 is $128,601,165, an increase of $7,334,932, or 6.05% above the current budget. I will now call on Kathy Greeter, Superintendent of Schools, to present the Board of Education budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. The budget development process in Farmington is grounded in our strategic improvement documents each year. This alignment is critical because our financial plan must advance the implementation of these visionary core improvement documents across all schools and all classrooms. As a leading school district in Connecticut and beyond, this alignment has continued to serve the community, families, and students of Farmington well, as evidenced by our innovative programming and impressive outcomes across a variety of indicators. From initial school submissions to the refinement of our operating budget, through school and program reviews of all requests, zero-based budgeting practices were utilized. This slide shows Farmington's mission statement, which promotes personal and academic excellence for all students, as well as the acquisition of all of the skills and dispositions outlined in our vision of a global citizen, or a VOGC, ensuring Farmington students lead the way now and in the future. Our VOGC guides our improvement work and thus is the foundation of our budget or financial plan for the coming school year. This slide outlines all of our core documents, which serve as a strong foundation for strategic planning, teacher, and administrator goal-setting, hiring, and recruiting, professional development, as well as our budget recommendations and all elements of our work with students each day. With our core improvement documents at the forefront of the development of the budget, here are the major themes for the 2425 budget. There are several unique themes of this budget that necessitated a higher recommended increase. The 2425 operating budget maintains and advances academic excellence through innovative programming pre-K through 12, promotes innovation in student-centered teaching and learning, supports increased student need in the areas of academic growth and social, emotional well-being, addresses needs and continuous improvement related to transportation, safety, registration, and residency, addresses the rebuilding of funding due to 2324 budget reductions, addresses the need to move funding off of SRR3 ARP grant to the operating budget as this grant funding is ending, addresses significant cost increases across supply, equipment, and many other accounts due to the economy, factors in other grant funding to offset costs to mitigate the overall increase in the operating budget, contains costs through zero-based budgeting, reductions of over $1.4 million, and efficiencies to maintain and advance current programming, and maintains class size levels in accordance with Board of Education policy. This slide provides an overview of the recommended operating budget for the 2425 school year. The total recommended budget amount is $79,544,240, for a dollar increase of $3,607,018, or a percent increase over the 2324 budget of 4.75%. The rankings listed on this slide are statewide, including all school districts, with one spending the most and 166 spending the least. It is important to note that Farmington ranks 111 in the most up-to-date per pupil expenditure reported by the Connecticut State Department of Education as compared to all other Connecticut school districts. Although we rank 111 in per pupil expenditures, our schools and school district consistently rank at the top of leading schools and school districts in Connecticut and beyond across a wide range of rankings. We continue to exhibit exemplary fiscal management within Connecticut and when you compare us to like-school districts across many indicators. The first budget driver is salaries, the 100 series, which accounts for 66% of the total recommended budget. The budget increase in the salary line is 5.05% and reflects negotiated contractual obligations. As a reminder, we have additional salary costs moving off SRR3 ARP funding due to both budget reductions in the 2324 budget and/or new positions due to student need. This series reflects all of our association's salary increases for the coming year, which are highlighted on this slide. The next budget driver is insurance, or the 200 series, which accounts for 15% of the total recommended budget with a 3.84% decrease. The 200 series includes employee health benefits with a high deductible HSA and coinsurance, as well as life insurance and long-term disability costs. Services is the next budget driver, the 300 series, which accounts for 15% of the total recommended budget. There is an increase of 10.90% in the services series driven by transportation services, a restoration of funding due to budget reductions in the 2324 budget, moving service costs from SRR3 ARP to the operating budget, and increased costs across many areas of the services account due to the economy. This account also provides for special services, consultation services, and tuition costs for outplacements, major facility projects, K-8 summer school, and technology-based operational systems, as well as professional development. The next series is supplies, or the 400 series, which accounts for approximately 3% of the total recommended budget. The supply series reflects a 16.75% increase for the restoration of supply funding due to budget reductions in the 2324 budget and increased costs across all areas of the supplies account due to the economy. The 500 series, or equipment series, accounts for approximately 1% of the total recommended budget and reflects a decrease of 0.43%. Dues and fees, or the 600 series, accounts for less than 1% of the total recommended budget, showing a 7.03% increase. This account includes memberships to organizations that support our strategic improvement efforts. This account also includes the Town of Farmington's negotiated liability, umbrella, and motor vehicle insurance for the school district. Kerma contractual obligations are the primary driver of this increase. Here is a view of the entire 2425 operating budget, all of which I reviewed within this presentation. In summary, the 2425 recommended budget is responsive to our students' needs and advances our visionary improvement priorities. The 4.75% increase is critical to maintaining educational programming, advancing student academic growth, and ensuring the safety and well-being of all members of our school district community. Many Connecticut school districts are facing similar or larger budget increases in 2425, and we are no exception. This is a unique time with a unique set of budget drivers for the coming school year's budget. At all times, our strategic improvement efforts and financial plan are centered upon our students, their needs, and their future as self-aware individuals, empowered learners, disciplined thinkers, engaged collaborators, and civic-minded contributors. Here is an overview of the 2425 school district's capital improvement budget. The total capital improvement request is $1,100,000 in capital cash and $2,384,445 for the bonding of the Westwood's roof for a total capital improvement request of $3,484,445. request of three million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Our seven-year capital improvement plan is listed on this slide and provides an overview of the twenty-four, twenty-five CIP requests and out-year requests. I will now introduce Kathy Blonsky to finish the twenty-four, twenty-five budget presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Grand list. The grand list is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate account shows a point five percent increase, the personal property account shows a three point five five percent increase, and the motor vehicle account shows a four point six three percent decrease. In summary, the grand list increased by point three six percent, or sixteen million, seventy-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars, for a total grand list of four billion, five hundred and ten million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. Some areas to note: motor vehicle decreased significantly due to the overall increased cost in motor vehicles and the high interest rates to finance the purchase of a car. Real estate and personal property show increases in line with our financial forecast. Revenues. I've broken revenues down into nine categories: other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest grants, service charges, others, and Westwoods contribution and fund balance. In summary, proposed non-tax revenues are fifteen million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, or a nine point five three percent increase over the current year. Some areas to note: state and federal grants have increased from last year. The town is projected to receive an additional nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-one in state and federal grants. The Westwoods contribution account includes three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars contribution from the Westwoods Golf Course to the operating budget to help support golf course maintenance expenses. Other revenue includes seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred dollars in payment from the other major users of the wastewater treatment plant. These payments represent their share of the cost of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, which was completed in 2020. These payments will be less each year based on a twenty-year payment schedule. Interest has increased by two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, or forty-two point seven five percent, and the fund balance contribution is proposed at one million, two hundred thousand. Proposed tax and mill rate. The proposed general fund budget will require a property tax of twenty-five point four five mils, which is an increase of one point two four mils, or a five point one three tax increase. In other words, a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value equals two thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars in taxes. Based on a tax rate of twenty-five point four five mils, the average residential assessment will see an increase in three hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-seven cents in their taxes. Conclusion. Last year's budget had a zero percent increase in expenditures, and a capital budget was reduced by seventy-four percent. Drastically reducing our capital budget year after year is neither sustainable nor best practice. Even though this capital budget does not meet our capital funding policy, it does significantly increase capital funding from last year and includes four bonding questions. In conclusion, overall, the town operating budget is a maintenance budget with limited expansion of town services. Some, but not all of our reductions from last year were restored in this budget, but in general, this proposed budget should enable us to maintain a high level of service. As always, town staff continually work to serve the community at high level without substantially increasing the tax burden on our property owners. We constantly review the organization for efficiencies, cost savings, and implementations of best practice for municipal governments. The annual town meeting is Monday, April fifteenth, 2024, at the Farmington High School and on Zoom. The referendum is April twenty-fifth at your regular polling location. And on the screen is the upcoming budget schedule. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy, and thank you very much to the superintendent for your presentations. I will now open it up to anybody in the public who would like to make a comment or question. You have five minutes. Please state your name, and please pertain it to the budget itself. Anybody inside the chambers like to make any comment or questions?
No, I just need my pen.
Pen?
Yeah.
All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Tim Kelly, sixty-two Westview. This budget proposal presented does not meet the three percent annual growth guideline for departments that was established two years ago in an amazingly bipartisan fashion at the time. I guess it's now pretty clear that we don't really have the collective backbone or organizational wherewithal to do so with any consistency. Depending on whose number you want to believe, inflation is currently running at two point eight percent to three point two percent, and we have decided to raise spending six percent for the upcoming fiscal year. Over a twelve-month period, the average Farmington homeowner will have received a property tax increase of fifteen percent. The tax increase in this proposed budget would actually be higher, except it looks like we are planning to take one point two million from our rainy day fund and drain a half million from the employee health insurance reserves to buy it down, which hardly seems like best practices. Look, none of these things are a killer for one year, but it is not a sustainable financial strategy. Here are a couple key actions we have to take going forward. First, you need to address any areas or departments that have systemic cost challenges. The longer you wait, the harder it is to do. You can't do it in a twelve-day budget meeting cycle. It might really be a full twelve-month exercise. At this point, while discussions are fresh and all the data is on the table, is a great time to do a pro forma on projected department budgets for the next, meaning the following year, similar to how the state does a two-year budget outlook. This will tell you what you need to focus on. For instance, our school department knows projected enrollment for coming years plus or minus one percent. They know what programs they plan to fund. They know how many additional headcount they want to add. They have a contracted union pay scale. They have a bus transportation contract, et cetera. We should put these projections into the spreadsheet and get a preliminary look at where that takes us. In January, our finance director presented an extended budget and tax outlook, but at this time, some of, some of the major cost assumptions are obviously no longer accurate, no fault of his. The second thing we need to do is it's time for Farmington to go on a debt diet. We're at a point where our debt service payments are fifty percent higher than a mirror-image town like Simsbury with similar, similar population, same number of school buildings, et cetera, et cetera. We are fast approaching the debt payment level of a comparable town like a Glastonbury, which, as you know, is a much larger municipality. While we will occasionally need to bond in order to replace a school roof by trucks for the town and occasionally pave some roads, we, we need to take off the coming three-to-five year capital plan outlook, any project that exceeds five million dollars. Now, someone could jump up and say, if we do it in ten years instead of two years, it will cost more money. But that's true of anything and reflective of where we are. In closing, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to take some meaningful and timely action on these two initiatives: a two-year major department pro forma and a debt diet capital plan update. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. It is, what, seven thirty-eight? We will close this public hearing. We will go to item C. Presentations.
We have our auditors here, and it's Catherine, correct? Yeah. Yeah, just right here. You can sit right here. Catherine, why don't you introduce yourself? And this is Catherine, our auditor.
I'm Catherine Haddad. I'm a partner with K P Y of Hunter Davies, and you're the partner on your audit. So you should have a copy of the presentation of the highlights of the fiscal year of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three audit.
And that should all be at your spot.
Mm-hmm. Is that coming over the audio? You guys hear it in back? Do you maybe want to try the other microphone, maybe? It's not going to change it? No, it's the same. No problem. If you, if you like. Thank you very much.
Yeah, because Zoom will be able to hear.
Okay.
And thank you for indulgentness and the patience for switching the, the order.
No problem. Better?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
So you received two reports: the annual comprehensive financial report, or the ACFIR, and the federal and state single audit. They contain, some of the highlights for fiscal 2023 are reclassification of the waste collection fund from an enterprise fund to a non-major governmental fund. Doesn't change how you're doing anything, just how it's shown in the audit. We also implemented the new SPIDA standard, the subscription-based information technology arrangements. It added about seventy-nine thousand of liabilities on Exhibit A, and there is a disclosure in the footnotes. This is essentially the same as the leases standard that was implemented in 2022, just for software. Our opinion on the financial statements was an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. Included in the financials is management's discussion and analysis, which is an executive summary of the fiscal year operations. You had unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which was seventeen point eight eight percent of the 2023 expenditures and transfers out. The general fund on a GAAP basis is on Exhibit C and D. You had unassigned fund balance of twenty-one million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, seventy-six dollars, and a net change of fund balance, an increase of two million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-four. The proprietary funds are found on Exhibits F, G, and H. The change in net position on Exhibit G for Westwoods Golf Course Fund was an increase of three hundred and forty-four thousand, eight sixty-nine, mainly due to an increase in revenues. And the Internal Service Fund was a decrease of a hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four, primarily due to an increase in claims expense. And your footnotes are also in there. The two largest items, or the most significant items, are the prior period adjustment note for that GASB ninety-six, the SPIDA implementation, which recorded an intangible right to use subscription assets and a subscription liability, and then the waste collection fund reclassification. The general fund on a budgetary basis can be found on RSI one A and one B. Your revenues and other financing sources were in excess of budget by a net of two million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six thirty-two. This was primarily due to property taxes above budget by three hundred and ninety-five thousand, intergovernmental grants above budget by five hundred and seventy-six thousand, primarily an increase in the revenue sharing grant, charges for services above budget by six hundred and forty-nine thousand, most of that was building permits, and income from investments above budget by one million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, primarily due to an increase in interest rates. Expenditures and other financing uses were under budget by six hundred and fifty-three thousand, six seventy-four. The town overall was under budget by four hundred and ninety-one thousand, and the education budget was under by twenty-two thousand. Also included in the RSI is the pension as a percent funded at sixty-one point eight percent, which is a slight decrease of one point eight seven percent from last year's funded. The decrease was mainly due to an increase in the total pension liability of seven point seven million, primarily due to a change in expected and actual experience. Also in the RSI is the OPEP, or the Other Post-Employment Benefits. That has a liability of forty-six million, five hundred and forty thousand, which was an increase from the prior year by two million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, primarily due to an increase in service cost of two point one million. This OPEP plan is currently not actively funded. It's just pay-as-you-go. For the federal single audit and the state single audit, we had no findings or question costs. For federal, we tested the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, the special education cluster, or the IDEA grants, and the education stabilization fund. For the state, we tested the tiered payment in lieu of taxes or pilot program, including the municipal revenue sharing grant, local capital improvement program, municipal grants and aid, town aid road grants, transportation fund, and local transportation capital improvement program. We also provided our communication with those charged with governance, which discusses our responsibility, which is to form and express an opinion about whether the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. It discusses that we are independent, that there's no uncorrected misstatements or material adjustments. There is one new applicable GASB standard that is coming up, which will be applicable in 2025, GASB one oh one uncompensated absences, which essentially just updates the recognition and measurement guidance for the liability. We haven't evaluated the effect yet, but it only affects the government-wide financial statements. We also had some recommendations for the town. For the town purchasing and accounts payable, we recommend improving segregation of duties. For education purchasing and accounts payable, also improving segregation of duties, as well as implementing a vendor approval process. Cafeteria cash receipts, we recommend recording based on sales rather than the cash receipts. Student activities, we recommend a segregation of duties with the deposits and recording the revenues. For the scholarship funds, we recommend recording them in the general ledger. For general ledger maintenance, we recommend all Board of Education funds be recorded in the financial accounting software, and all recorded in accordance with GAAP, primarily making sure the receivables and unearned are updated at year-end. Education accounts payable, we recommend that the recording of accounts payable and encumbrances be updated, and the fraud policy, we just recommend as a best practice. There were two recommendations from the prior year that removed. Journal entry documentation was corrected, and the Board of Ed approval on overspent objects and lines was implemented. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Brian, any questions?
Uh, no, thank you very much.
Sarah?
No, thank you.
Keith?
Well, thank you.
Amy?
No.
Dave?
Questions?
Well, I thank you very much. I know the town and the Board of Ed will take the recommendations like they did last year and put them into effect, so appreciate all your hard work, and we'll see you again next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to E, new items. We have none. We'll open it up now for a regular public comment. Anybody in the audience would like to come up and make public comment on anything? You have five minutes. Please state your name, and you come up to the podium. Anybody in the chambers? Anybody online?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, we'll give it a second. And we will move on. G.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for the March twelfth, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the March thirteenth, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the March fourteenth, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting.
Second?
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. H. Read of Communications. We have none. Chair Reports. Nineteen twenty-eight Building Committee. I will just state again that we are doing a fundraiser. It's called Buy a Brick Fundraiser. The nineteen twenty-eight Building Committee in the town of Farmington is proud to announce a Buy a Brick fundraiser to generate funds for the Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship. These bricks will be placed by the main interests of the renovated nineteen twenty-eight building, which will serve as your new town hall. Residents and businesses will be able to purchase two options: a four-by-eight with three lines for a hundred dollars and an eight-by-eight, six lines for two hundred dollars. Become a part of the building's history by memorializing a loved one, your family, or business, or yourself. For more questions, please visit the W W W dot nineteen twenty-eight building dot org. And we'll move on to the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Nothing new to report beyond last year, last month's report.
Thank you. High School.
Sure, so we had our last meeting on March twentieth. We awarded some additional contracts, one for move, moving services, another for F F and E custodial equipment. We also came to consensus on a potential issue to explore having our design architects develop a fee proposal for the design of new bleachers at the high school, and the reason being is that we're doing really well with our owner's contingency budget, and it's something that needs to occur at some point in the future for ADA compliance, so we're just in the exploratory phase to see if this is a possibility moving forward. And our next meeting will be this Wednesday.
Thank you. Green Efforts.
Okay, the last meeting of Green Efforts was on March fifth, and it And most of the conversation was about the, the townwide cleanup, which is April 20th. And there'll be more, the signup is going to be available on the Green Efforts Committee page on the town's website. So you can sign up. Other topics we talked about was race, waste reduction goals, and they plan to have more details in May. They are looking for more volunteers from the Board of Education to recruit more kids for the, for the town cleanup. The next meeting is going to be April 2nd, tomorrow. And the conversations will continue on those topics, as well as the Westwoods composting program, which is being worked on. They're also watching the Senate Bill 191 for new updates. And there will be discussions on letter signs and Adopt a Road efforts. And that's it for Green Efforts.
Thank you. Land acquisition, nothing new to report as we had the hearing today for the purchase of Glen Hollow. Item J, Chair Report. April is the National Distracted Driver Awareness Month. Put the phone away or pay. Police will be looking for drivers who choose to ignore the Connecticut Handheld Mobile Electronics Law. There is a new Korean cuisine restaurant that just opened. It's called Refresh Food and Drink, located at 58 Farmington Avenue, over by the reservoir. April 7th is the very popular Art of Sharing event at the Hillstead Museum, complete with hayrides, food vendors, and crafts. You can sign up at the Hillstead, and please enjoy that. SUGO is now serving brunch on Saturdays and Sundays. Looks like everybody's jumping on their brunch bandwagon now. And April 3rd, FHS Baseball will have a fundraiser at Naples Pizza. They will donate a portion of all their proceeds to the program, so you can order in or take out that day. We will move on to the Board of Education.
Patty?
Oh, Patty's not here. I'm sorry. Thank you. We will move on to Conservation at Lynn Wetlands. That's Patty also. All right. How about EDC?
Okay. The EDC has sent out communications on both March 28th and March 21st as to goings-on in, in the town. Their next meeting is, well, the last meeting was March 13th. And the next meeting is going to be on April 4th. I'm sorry. Sorry. The next meeting's April 10th. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. Historic District, Farmington.
I wanted to say thank you to the citizens of the Historic District who continue to reach out to the Commission and work with the Commission to make sure any changes or improvements they make to their property stay within the standards of our Historic District, which they are, and is what keeps it beautiful. And just a request to those in the Historic District to continue to work with the Commission so that we maintain our historic beauty. Thank you.
Thank you. Human Relations Commission. That's Patty also. Oh, great. Library.
Library Board last met March 20th. Since then, they had a very successful Makers Fair on March 24th. Joey, I think you stopped by as well. All parking lots were full, from the library through the new parking in the high school. It was a really, really well-attended event. My kids had a great time, educational and fun. So it was really nice to see the library so full of life. Also, springtime, the Barney Library has the Seed Library, which I think somebody mentioned when they were doing their budget report, but we also went there. They helped us out. My kids got a bunch of plants that we're starting to do, so lots of things for us to do at the library. Another thing the library has coming up is the Farmington Libraries and Economic Development Commission will be hosting a two-part Small Business Panel, engineering, sorry, Emerging Entrepreneurial Journey. We'll hear from local entrepreneurs as they discuss strategies and opportunities, challenges they've encountered as, as they've opened their doors. Part One, Opening Doors, will be held April 23rd, 2024. Part Two, Keeping the Doors Open, will take place on May 14th. This event will, is free, but registration is required, and you can go on the Farmington Library website to find out about registration. The next Library Board meeting will be Thursday, April 18th.
Thank you. The event was well-attended. It was pretty amazing to see all the things that the library has now, as far as what they can do for video, photographs, and actually, you know, the 3D building that they're able to do. So it's great. TPZ.
Last meeting was held last Monday night here in the Town Council Chambers. The business was pretty, pretty much standard business. Nothing really too different than what, what we've heard in the past. So there's really not too much new to report, and then, and the first meeting in April's next week.
Thank you very much. You need the Historic District.
Okay, the last meeting was March 7th, and we had much discussion on the 2024 Walking Tour, which is going to be held on September 28th, from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. And on Saturday, which is a Sunday, from 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock. They plan to include around 12 homes on Main Street, including the Lawton Mill. And more, more details will come out on that. We also discussed a property change on 1774 Farmington Avenue. There was a potential change to the previous COA for exterior renovations. And they did apply for a modification on that. The next meeting of the Unionville Historic District is April 4th.
Thursday. Thank you very much. There is note 10. We'll go over to 11 Water Pollution Control Authority.
So a public hearing was held on March 13th to set user rates for residential customers at $366.24 per year, and the user rate for commercial customers at $3.17 per 100 cubic feet used. These rates reflect a 9% increase over the current rate build this budget year. But even with this increase, we remain the lowest rates out of 14 surrounding towns. The primary drivers for this increase were hauling costs, which went up over $300,000, and electricity, which also went up $300,000, and chemical costs. And there are certain chemicals that are required by the DEEP and EPA, and they've just gone up due to inflation. So even with cutting and making reductions in the budget, this was necessary. But again, it still remains, we still remain the lowest out of our, our surrounding towns. The next meeting will be April 10th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to K. Reporter of the Town Manager.
You have the report in front of you. As you can see, this is a quarterly report agenda. I hope you would agree that there's a lot been going on in the last quarter. I don't know if you have any particular questions on the quarterly report. I'd be more than happy to answer. And then the only other item is, is that Shannon had written a memo that there's some ongoing training requirements for land use commissioners, and our commissioners have attended the training and meet the requirement.
Excellent. Any questions for Kathy on the report? Brian?
No, it looks quite full. So thank you, and you and your staff.
Sarah?
No questions.
Keith?
No questions.
Amy?
No questions.
Dave?
No questions.
Thank you very much. Let me get a motion, please.
Ah, yes. I have the note here to ask for a motion to accept the Town Manager's report.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item L6, I make a motion that Ann O'Malley Kerr be appointed to the Unionville Historic and Historic District and Properties Commission for the balance of a five-year term immediately and ending January 2027.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to M, Old Business. We don't have any. N, one, please.
Agenda item N1, to approve the Town Council, I make a motion to approve the Town Council's recommended budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Second?
Motion is second. Kathy?
As you know, that before it was the proposed budget. Now it becomes your recommended budget.
Excellent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N2, I make a motion that the attached resolutions, item 1 through 9, be forwarded to the annual town meeting with a recommendation that they be approved.
Second?
Motion is second. Kathy?
So you have a bunch of different resolutions, items 1 through 9. Item 1 is that you're gonna, that the annual town report be approved, that the budget be approved, that a second town meeting, if necessary, with the times. It also has the bonding questions to appropriate the Westwoods roof, the replacement of the HVAC in the roof at the police department, the two fire trucks, and also list items 3 through 9, list the times in the voting places. So these are all your standard resolutions.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N3, I make a motion to approve the warning for the April 29th, 2024 Second Town Meeting and the May 9th, 2024 referendum.
Second?
Motion is second. Kathy?
This is to approve a warning for a second town meeting and referendum if needed. And Maureen, should everyone sign this before they leave today?
All right, and we'll be able to get this over to Patty for her signature. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N4, I make a motion to award bid number 347 Burlington Road Reconstruction to Colossal Concrete Inc. of Berlin, Connecticut, at a contract cost of $2,476,063.80, subject to Connecticut Department of Transportation, CROG, and CHRO review and approval.
Second?
Motion is second. Kathy?
This is to award a contract for full-depth pavement reconstruction of Burlington Road from the Burlington Town Line to Plainville Avenue, State Road 177. Bids for the project were open on March 1st. The town received six bids, and this is the lowest bid. Staff have reviewed the paperwork and the qualified for the lowest bidder, and have found them to be satisfactory. We have some state approvals and some different things, because, as you guys know, that this was 100% funded by grant funds.
Excellent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N5, I make a motion to recommend the purchase of property owned by W2, sorry, WD2 LLC, located at 9300 to 9307 Glen Hollow Drive to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for a report under Section 8-24 of the Connecticut State Statutes.
Second?
Motion is second.
So we had the public hearing tonight on this. I don't know if the council has any questions, but this is, again, sending it to an 8-24, and then it would come back to us in May for the approval to purchase it.
Correct.
We still have to, yeah.
Yeah. Any questions?
The only comment I have is I thank Shannon, because again, her presentation was, you know, very complete. I think it, you know, the graphics that were attached to the report, I think, are pretty explanatory of the parcel and its adjacencies, and just, I think, you know, we acted upon it, but I think it was a good presentation.
Thank you. And thank you, Shannon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N6, I make a motion to recommend the replacement of an HVAC system and roof at the police facility located at 319 New Britton Avenue, Unionville, Connecticut, to the Plan, to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for a report under Section 8-24 of the Connecticut State Statutes.
Second?
Motion is second.
Tip, we have to send these projects for an 8-24. These are the bonding questions. Typically, they're in the resolution, but they weren't in the resolution, and that's why they're separated, separated out.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N7, I make a motion to recommend the replacement of the roof at Westwoods Upper Elementary School located at 50 Jutson Lane, Farmington, Connecticut, to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for a report under Section 8-24 of the Connecticut State Statutes.
Second?
Motion is second. Kathy?
Same thing.
Same thing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N9, I make a motion to approve a permanent easement for Connecticut Light and Power Company, DBA, Eversource Energy, for the Farmington High School project.
Second?
This is to approve a permanent easement so that Eversource can put their utilities on the property, which will go to the 1928 building and the new high school building. The town attorney and the town staff have reviewed this, so it's a permanent easement to Eversource.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I think we have a screw-up on the agenda items.
No.
Yeah, I think that was supposed to be eight, but it's listed as nine. Anyways, nine should be next, Keith. That should have been Agenda Item 8.
I probably read it off.
No, no, it's on the paperwork as nine, too, but in the, on the agenda, it's listed as eight.
Mine looks good. Going crazy, but.
You have an old agenda.
I could have an old agenda.
He's hopped up on Sudafed. He doesn't know. I'll make, I'll make a motion, Agenda Item N9, to approve the Americans with Disabilities Act Policy and Grievance Procedure.
Second?
Motion is second.
So the next few items, it's our standard policies that we approve every year. There have been no changes in these policies, but it's best practices to review them once a year.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Yes, I need new glasses. Thank you.
Agenda item N10, I make a motion to approve the Fair Housing Resolution for the town of Farmington and authorize the town manager to sign and distribute said resolution.
Second?
Motion is second.
Again, this is our fair housing resolution, which is looked at every year.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
N11, I make a motion to adopt the Farmington Equal Employment Opportunity Program and Affirmative Action Plan for the town of Farmington.
Second?
Motion is second.
Again, our equal, equal employment opportunity program. And I also forgot to mention that April is Fair Housing Month, and that's why we do it in April.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N12, I make a motion to adopt the Compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 Statement for the town of Farmington and authorize the town manager to sign and distribute said resolution.
Second?
Motion is second. Kathy?
And this is just our, our compliance, and again, there's no changes to it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda M13, to adopt the Fair Housing Policy Statement for the town of Farmington and authorize the town manager to sign and distribute said resolution.
Second?
Motion is second. Kathy?
Our policy, our fair, fair housing policy statement. Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N14, I make a motion to cancel the April 23rd, 2024 Town Council Meeting.
Second?
Kathy?
We're recommending that we cancel the 23rd meeting. Just remember that we do have the annual town meeting, and that's at the high school, and everyone should be attending that.
Everybody?
Everyone.
Everyone.
Everyone on this table.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N15, I make a motion to approve the property tax refunds listed here.
Second?
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have no executive session. Kathy, I think next time we need like three or four more of these, so Keith can keep on reading, because he does such a great job. And with that, I hope everybody enjoys their April Fool's Day, and we'll call for an adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn the April 1st, 2024 Town Council Meeting.
Second?
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.